Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the September 13th, 2022 Cupertino Planning Commission Meeting. Uh, may we have the roll call please? Oh, excuse me, one second. Um, I've been told to read the following instructions. You can directly download the teleconference software or connect to the meeting in your internet browser. If you're using your browser, make sure you're using a current and up-to-date browser, Chrome, thirty, version thirty plus, Firefox twenty-seven plus, Microsoft Edge twelve plus, Safari seven plus. Certain functionality may be disabled on older browsers, browsers including Internet Explorer. You will be asked to enter an email address and a name followed by an email with instructions on how to connect to the meeting. Your email address will not be disclosed to the public if you wish to make an oral or public comment. Uh, but do not wish to provide your name, you may enter Cupertino resident or similar designation. When the chair calls for the item on which you wish to speak, click on raise hand. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called to speak. When called, please limit your remarks to the time allotted and the specific agenda topic. May we have the roll call please?
Chair Sharif.
Here.
Vice Chair Madhavatla.
Yes.
Commissioner Capil. Commissioner Capil, thank you. Commissioner Saxena.
Here.
And Commissioner Wong.
Uh, President.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first item of business is to approve past meetings minutes. Um, unfortunately, I do not see the minutes attached to the agenda. Are they somewhere where we can look at them here? Syrah or Pew, um, I don't see a link to the minutes in the planning commission agenda. Am I missing that?
I am trying to pull the agenda up now, sir.
All I have is the draft nine thirteen agendas. Um, so I need to, maybe there's a later agenda that I don't have.
I do have it pulled up here. Pew, would you like me to share my screen?
Please do. It is part of the finalized agenda, sir.
Okay, that wasn't sent to me, so I need to, um, find it here.
I'll go ahead and share my screen and then.
Okay, great. Okay, one second and I will have it. Okay. Okay, everyone else, you can start reading that. I've got it here up now too. And take a minute to look it over if you haven't already. Okay. And then I will entertain. Okay, here we go. So first let's look at the June twenty-eighth and see if there's anything. So does anybody want to make a motion to approve the June twenty-eighth minutes?
Hi Chair, I'd happy to make a motion to approve the minutes for the twenty-eighth of June.
I will second that. We have a roll call vote, please.
Chair Sharif.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madhavatla.
Yes.
Commissioner Capil.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Saxena.
Abstained.
And Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero zero one.
Very good. So next we would like to review and approve the July fifth Planning Commission meeting. So if you can take a moment to review those.
Chair Sharif, would you like me to share a screen for this draft minutes as well?
Um, sure, that yeah, that would be great, but I suppose we're all looking at them on our um, computers anyway. Okay, let's see if there's anything. Okay, well, there's a lot here. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the July fifth minutes. This is the Joint Planning Commission Housing Commission meeting, special meeting.
I'll second. There you go.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Chair Sharif.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madhavatla.
Yes.
Commissioner Capil.
Abstained.
Commissioner Saxena.
Abstained.
And Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Minutes adopted three zero zero two.
Okay, and then finally we have the July twelfth Planning Commission meeting. Um, to approve those minutes. Uh, okay, this is, these are the, let's see. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the July twelfth minutes.
I guess I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Wong already seconded. Let's just have the roll call vote.
Okay, okay. I thought I heard him saying I can't second it, so, okay.
Chair Sharif.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madhavatla.
Yes.
Commissioner Capil.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Saxena.
Abstained.
Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Minutes adopted for zero zero one.
Okay, I, we don't have any postponements, so we're on to oral communications. This is the portion of the media reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decision with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Okay, let me go to participants and see, anyone has their hands raised, the attendees. Okay, I see two hands raised. First, Jennifer Griffin, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, um, Chair Sharif. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and this has been a busy summer for everyone. Um, I'll lay the blame straight at our legislators in Sacramento. They may be on vacation, but the cities are all having to work double time to try to deal with the onslaught of the RENA and the housing element. Um, I've been following Santa Cruz counties because my mother is over there. Um, she's a senior citizen and she does her best, but you know, I've also been following what's been going on in Monterey County, um, in their cog. Um, I feel increasingly that the public is being excluded, and this has been going on for four years now. We, in addition to the out-of-control RENA and housing element, um, and believe me, I feel for our planners and our staff. This has taken up time for them. It has been very, very difficult for everyone. We also have the SB nine and SB ten drama, which got dumped on us. Again, the public is excluded. I am beginning to resent the way our state is run, and I will not vote for this governor. I will not vote for him even if he goes to the presidency. I've had enough of it. I think a lot of people too, and that we have our Neighborhood Voices Initiative, which is coming online next year, which is primarily aimed at stopping SB nine and SB ten, but as far as I'm concerned, I wish they would lump RENA in there. And the ADU out-of-control laws. I won't go into ADUs particularly with current law because we have that on the books tonight. But there is a potential new ADU law called AV nine one six, which was discussed in the legislative review a couple of days ago. This beauty has been sent through the Assembly and the Senate and is on the governor's desk. I am absolutely appalled at this type of legislation. Again, they are trying to exclude the public, no public hearings. You can take an existing house and you can add bedrooms to it, like you can turn the living room or kitchen into bedrooms, and no one can say anything. Then those units can be turned into junior ADUs with no bathrooms. They also had the insult injury to throw in something about heights of ADUs, depending on how close they were to transit. It's a bunch of, I'm sorry, I won't go there, but this type of legislation makes me think that there's a real secret society here that that the public is being told they aren't part of. This is no way to run a state. This is no way to.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, Lisa, go ahead.
Hi, I, I'm, I'd like to request, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Voice wasn't going, okay. I would like to request that Planning Commission have a study session on particular troublesome things with ADUs in general. Um, I have witnessed, I can send pictures, I can send information at a later date, where there's a tendency, there's a lot of abuse of the ADU laws happening currently. We have, for some reason, it's allowable to have a porch outside the main home with the ADU having its only entry attached ADU. It could happen with detached, I suppose, but currently what's happening is attached ADUs. The only access to those ADUs for the people who are to live in them theoretically affordable housing, but not so much, I believe. Um, the only way for them to enter is through the porch. The most I've seen now are covered porches and the wall to the ADU and the wall to the living area of the homes are perpendicular to each other, making a patio and a covered patio at that. Um, it, it's very unlikely that with sliding nano doors, huge glass sliding doors on both of those perpendicular walls, one going into the ADU, the only entrance, and one going into the living area of the home, are going to be conducive to having quote-unquote strangers or you know, family, yeah, maybe, but maybe not family, um, living in the ADU. The layouts are also often made such that there is a common wall between the main house and the ADU that can easily be punched through, shall we say, after permits. And I've been to open houses on new homes with this setup and listened to agents and listened to potential buyers speak about, oh yeah, we can take this fall out, we can do this, we can do that. It's an abuse and it's a way to get a far bigger house. And I just hope you will please have a study session and try to discuss a way that ordinances can be written to avoid this ongoing building issue. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Um, yeah, I think we may be able to add something. I'm not sure what we can do legally to stop the abuse, but we could have a study session on it if, um, the other planning commissioners agree. Okay, now we are on to the first, um, item, the first public hearing. There's nothing on consent calendar. So item four is the tentative map to consider the subdivision of one, one point two five acre parcel into six parcels ranging between seven thousand five hundred twenty-six square feet and nine thousand six hundred and fifteen square feet. Two-story permits and minor residential permits to consider the development of six single-family homes, each with a second-story balcony. Application numbers TM twenty twenty-one oh oh six, R twenty twenty-one oh forty, oh forty-one, oh forty-two, oh forty-three, and oh forty-five, and RM twenty twenty-two, oh one five, oh one six, oh two-two, oh two-four, oh two-five, oh two-six. The applicant is Aluk Damaretti. The location is two zero eight six zero McCollum Road, assessor parcel number three five nine dash two zero dash zero three zero. And may we have the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Sharif. Good evening. My name is Pew Gush. I'm the planning manager. I would like to introduce tonight, uh, Brienne Harkusha, our associate planner, who is the project manager for this project. Brienne?
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. I'll be presenting. I'm sharing my screen.
Okay, we can see it.
Okay, great. Um, as the Chair mentioned, the project before you this evening is a tentative map to consider the subdivision of one one point two five acre parcel into six parcels. Two-story permits and minor residential permits to consider the development of six single-family homes, each with a second-story balcony. The project site is one point two five acres and located at the southwest corner of McCollum Road and Cherryland Drive. Cherryland Drive is a private street. The site is developed with a single-family residence, garage and accessory structure in the northern portion, as well as a shed and vehicle storage in the southern portion, which are used as storage space for automobiles and boats. The tentative map would subdivide one lot into seven, seven separate parcels. The six lots will each contain a single-family dwelling, and the seventh lot is to accommodate the widening and completion of an existing private roadway and cul-de-sac on Cherryland Drive. Additionally, bike and pedestrian-related improvements are proposed along McCollum, and the applicant will later clean up the title by providing a thirty-foot dedication along McCollum Road. As mentioned, city permits include six two-story permits and six minor residential permits for the development of the two-story homes and second-story balconies. For context, I'll provide a brief overview of the project history with more details available in the staff report. On October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, the applicant applied for a rezoning, tentative map, and two, and six two-story permits. Staff reviewed the proposal at that time. On May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Environmental Review Committee reviewed and determined that a mitigated negative declaration was the appropriate document for the proposed project, but directed additional soil testing to be conducted for the project. On June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the request of the applicant, city staff reevaluated the proposed project under the Housing Accountability Act, also known as HAA, and guidelines issued by the Department of commu-, of Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD. Since then, the applicant elected to revise the project to comply with all applicable objective standards, to not require rezoning, and to pursue an infill exemption in lieu of finalizing the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. The applicant also voluntarily agreed to comply with the mitigation measures identified in the ISMD, and these are added as conditions to the project. The Housing Accountability Act requires that when a proposed project is consistent with objective general plan standards and criteria, but the current zoning is inconsistent with the general plan designation, the local agency cannot require a rezoning request. Um, the project site has a general plan land use designation of low-density residential of one five, one to five dwellings per acre and is one point two five acres in size. The maximum allowable density proposed is six dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with HAA. The current zoning district is R one-ten, but this would not allow the maximum build-out for the site. Instead, HCD guidance allows the city to require the housing development to comply with objective standards contained elsewhere in the zoning code that are consistent with the general plan designation. Um, so therefore, staff determined that the R one seven point five zoning district, district standards are consistent with the general plan land use designation and applicable for this project. Um, these are the development regulations. The subdivision includes six new lots ranging from seven thousand five hundred twenty-six square feet to nine thousand six hundred and fifteen square feet, each with a lot width that is a minimum of sixty feet wide, which is consistent with the R one seven point five zoning district. And each lot will be developed with two single-family homes that range between three thousand seven hundred and nineteen square feet to four thousand seven hundred and forty-five square feet, with attached ADUs ranging from five hundred and fifty square, seven, five hundred and fifty-seven square feet to six hundred square feet.
Sorry, can I interrupt you? Did you say each lot will have two single-family homes?
Uh, two-story, single-family.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, the proposed homes comply with the building development standards, including setbacks, lot coverage, floor-air ratio, and building height per the R one ordinance. The project includes demolishing existing buildings and removal of several unprotected trees to allow for the six two-story permits on the six residential lots. Each new two-story home contains a second-story balcony and an attached ADU. The six lots provide vehicle and pedestrian access through the private street on Cherryland Drive from McCollum Road. Each residence provides five off-street parking spaces, three uncovered on the driveway as shown in the gray triangles, and two covered contained within an enclosed garage. Additionally, one on-street parking space is proposed for each residence as shown in the gray rectangles. And the proposed parking is consistent with chapter one point two, chapter nineteen point one two for parking regulations of the municipal code. As shown in the green ovals on the slide, privacy planting along the view sheds are proposed to mitigate privacy impacts adjacent to neighbors from new second-story windows and second-story balconies that have views into neighboring side and rear yards. As you can see on this slide, um, there are proposed plantings in the rear of, of each lot, uh, but these lots are but a church parking lot, and uh, the, these plantings are proposed as voluntary. So privacy planting is not required along these rear yards um, because the second-story windows would not have views into neighboring single-family rear or side yards. The applicant has introduced different projections and a variation of of materials along the building frangible that help to reduce the massing of the structure. The living area is closer to the street while garage is setback, more to articulate the street-facing elevation. As shown on these renderings, there are second-story balconies at the front of each residence. These range between fifty-five square feet to two hundred and six square feet in size, and propose a decorative railing that is at least seventy-five percent transparent. And as discussed previously, um, potential impacts from uh, these view sheds of the balconies are mitigated with proposed privacy plantings that would provide screening for adjacent neighbor's side yards. Traffic impacts of the proposed project were also evaluated in the infill exemption memorandum. Sequo guidelines considers vehicle miles traveled or VMT the most appropriate measure to evaluate tra-, transportation impacts for projects. Um, the project is expected to generate an average of a hundred and one new daily local trips and is a residential project of less than twenty units, which would allow this project to be screened out or assumed to not have VMT impacts as it falls into the small projects category. As discussed previously, the project has been parked to meet the city's parking requirements found in chapter nineteen point one two four. And the project does include pedestrian and bicycle-related improvements along McCollum Road. Um, these include, but are not limited to modifications to the raised island along McCollum Road due to the existing driver removals to meet trash collection requirements. Uh, as discussed previously, an infill development project exemption memorandum has been prepared and is included as attachment five in the packet. The project has been determined to not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore exempt from SEQUA as discussed in the memorandum. As discussed in the project history slide, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to implement mitigation measures from the draft ISMD, and these are included in the recommended conditions of approval for the project. Prior to this meeting, notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the project site. A site sign was posted on-site and a legal ad in the paper. A staff received six comments after preparation of the staff report, and they were provided to the commission as supplemental information. Uh, comments included concerns about street widening improvements, second-story balconies, um, setbacks for the home on Lot Six, the need for housing ADU development in the area that would support employees surrounding commercial uses, and requests for the project to propose higher density than the proposed single-family homes. Staff finds that the project complies with the applicable general plan land use designation and the site and building development standards of the R one ordinance. Staff therefore recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed draft resolution to find that the proposed actions are exempt from SEQUA, approve the tentative map, six two-story permits, and six minor residential permits. This concludes my presentation, and we are available to answer any questions. The applicant is also here this evening and prepared a short presentation tonight.
Okay, um, city attorney, should we have the applicant present, uh, their presentation prior to going to public comment? Uh, is that up to me?
It's at your discretion.
Okay, yeah, why don't we have the applicant, um, do their presentation, then we'll go to public comment. So, welcome, Aluk. Are you presenting or?
No, it'll be Kelly, Kelly Snyder. Thank you.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Uh, that sounds great. Hold on, let me get my screen share up. I was coordinating with your. Oh, start my video.
Yeah, we can see it.
Great, thank you so much. My name's Kelly Snyder, and I'm here, um, with my friend Alak Damaretti, who is the property owner. And, uh, we're very pleased to answer a few extra questions that were not covered in that excellent staff report. I want to start by thanking city staff. We've been processing this application, as you know, for almost eighteen months now, and it's been really great to work with Brienne and Jennifer Pew and the city attorney's office. So thank you very much and for your very thorough staff report. Um, I'm not going to cover anything that you've just thoroughly covered, but I do want to talk a little bit about, uh, the thoroughness of our review, our community outreach, benefits to the city and the neighborhood, and the fact that this does in fact increase your housing count in the city by a, you know, a, a, an amount that we can measure. As you learned in the staff report, we've been working on this project since, uh, February of twenty twenty-one. Um, every time, every red dot you see was a, uh, was a stakeholder milestone event, such as a review or an ARC meeting, and each time we revised it before the next event means that this was getting refined and refined and refined and improved really every step of the way. So there has been a lot of revision and refinement over the past year and a half. And on the city side alone, every. And on the city side alone, every single reviewer and every single planner that you see on the screen right now is part of the city's review team. So, there are obviously your directors, public works and planning, and the excellent staff you have. We also have the county involved. The city hired three different private firms to do peer reviews. So, this is in addition to our experts and our engineers, surveyors, and architects as well. So, lots of quality, lots of review going into this, making sure our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. In addition to that, for a miss, Alak has been meeting regularly with many of the neighbors, including the church next door, including many of the single-family homeowners on the south. We've had discussions about their fence material and things that we can do to assist them with privacy and other planting issues. And we've also been working very closely with the existing HOA on the other side of the private street, which is the Cherryland HOA. We've been reaching out to even greater radiuses as well. We've hosted two private Zoom meetings to answer questions and make sure anybody had questions about the schedule. We did mailers for the 300-foot radius, again, complying with the city obligation. We have a whole website up, so people could really dig into the details if they wanted to understand what that overhang was or what that particular balcony dimension was. And we can tell from the analytics that we've had at least, you know, at least 79 or so unique New Year's counts. So, somebody's been looking at it. A lot of people have learned a lot over the last 18 months. And the result of our refining and the result of the city's advice is these six homes meet every single objective condition that the city has. There is nothing here that requires a variance or an exception or really any subjective decision at all. Of course, the city of Cupertino, as some of your public speakers have mentioned, is nearing the end of its housing element process. Although these homes are all market-rate homes, it will add 12 more homes to the city's housing stock, and it is considered a pipeline project. There is at least $1.3 million of city fees going into parks, to inclusionary housing, school impact fees. These are family homes, which are very likely to have children attending local public schools, so it will help the school enrollment policies as well. And of course, all of the cost recovery to help with the city. We paid, you know, lots of review fees and compensated staff on our cost recovery as well. We did hear a great statement or two from your staff member about the Housing Accountability Act and how our project does meet all of the requirements in order to have a streamlined approval. I think, you know, depending on the decision that we made to go with the SEQA infill exemption, we're probably past the 30-day timeline that the Housing Accountability Act talks about. But we've been really happy to take the time and to go to ERC and to come to you tonight. So, we're looking forward to answering any detailed questions and then making sure that we follow all of the obligations that are imposed by the jurisdiction that has authority in this case. So, that's it for me tonight. I think you know that our that our environmental consultant is here to answer questions, and the city's environmental consultant, I'm here to answer questions, and the property owner, Alak Damareti, is here as well. So, thank you very much.
Okay, very good. So, we will move now. Before it comes back to the commissioners, we'll move to public comment. I see three hand raised so far. The first speaker... Oh, no, I see a bunch of him. Okay, the first speaker, David Frankel. You each have three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is David Frankel. My way of introduction, I'm a longtime Californian. In a sense, my parents grew up in Oakland and Berkeley, graduated from Berkeley in the 50s, moved away. I grew up in Illinois, came back to Santa Cruz in 1980, and then left and returned to Silicon Valley in 1995. So, I have a long history watching and hearing about how Silicon Valley has changed from orchards to what it is today and the housing challenges associated. I'm here in support of this project. I think that it's a wonderful project. I've ridden my bike from Montevista down the great bike path on McCollum down to this location. From Google Maps, you can see that it formerly was essentially a junkyard, housing dozens of boats and motorhomes and trucks and cars and so forth. So, I have looked at the website, and I think these are very attractive homes. I watch what's changing over in Montevista and, again, look at this development as one that seems very thoughtful and should be a big upgrade for the immediate neighbors, for the frontage along with McCollum and the general area. I think it'll be a great home for the half dozen families that will get to occupy these residences. So, I think, just I would recommend approval. I read the staff report. It seems like there's been a lot of diligence paid to all of the details and compliance with all of the plans and so forth. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Sue Jane Han. Welcome. Go ahead. You'll have to unmute yourself. I cannot unmute you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm speaking for the Cherryland Cupertino HOA. I have sent the comment as a supplement to the planner. And I'd just like to get the commission, a planning commission, to attention. It's the signed the signed conceptual plan. That was created in Cherryland Development. And from that signed conceptual plan, the city has agreed the 10 feet in the map. It's a five-feet sidewalk and five-feet landscape. And the five-feet landscape area has the two-and-a-half-feet landscape area from the Cherryland Drive. Right now, the city plans to eliminate this five-feet landscape area from the common area. We don't agree because this signed conceptual plan was created for the future development of the lot on 20860 McClellan Road. So, our last recommendation is we, as a Cupertino resident, we are willing to give the value of this two-and-a-half-feet landscape area to benefit the Cupertino school. But unfortunately, the developer denied our proposal. And the second second item I'd like to get the commission attention is the C3 plan on this project. The FF, the finished floor height for the existing three houses on Cherryland Drive, it's not right and misleading. I am the developer of the Cherryland project. I do know what's the number. And the difference is, for example, the Lot 6 and the house on 20850 Cherryland Drive are side by side, and the elevation is six feet difference.
So, can you finish up? I'm letting you go overtime, but can you finish up with your comment?
Okay.
And then I'll have the staff adjust.
I suggest the current developer should provide the survey report to validate the the height, the finished floor of the current Cherryland Drive, and then provide the the elevation to make sure the elevation is the same. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You know, I let you go over. There's a little bit of a language barrier, so that's why I let you go a little bit over. But normally, we don't allow that. Can the staff respond or the property owner respond to these concerns?
Chair Sharp, if I can...
Go ahead, go ahead, Pew.
And then I'm sure the applicant will also have something to add.
Okay.
The applicant has provided engineering drawings drawn up by a civil engineer, which have been reviewed by the Public Works Department pretty carefully. And all the improvements that have been designed have been designed with drainage and appropriate elevations in mind. And with that, I will just hand it over to the applicant for their response.
Right. I guess I don't understand the five-feet
Yes.
landscape barrier that the speaker was concerned about.
Correct. I can speak to that maybe. Maybe Brianne, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, I could pull up the plans, but maybe Alak would be the best to just explain the civil drawings that he's prepared. There are cut sections that show the elevation changes.
I think, Mr. Chair, I can answer the question with regard to the five feet. So, when the original Cherryland development was developed, there was an understanding that there would be a shared private street between the two properties on the east and the west. There was a conceptual a conceptual street layout plan that was provided and developed by the development of the original Cherryland development. And in that, they had assumed certain landscape easements and sidewalk improvements and things like that. However, we cannot bind this property owner to the conceptual plan that they had drawn up at the time. When this property owner brought their plans in, Public Works reviewed the plans that they submitted and made the determination that it was the original conceptual plan was one way of developing that particular street. However, the proposal is not necessarily inconsistent with what is acceptable. And so, as a result, while the original property owner is unhappy about the fact that the conceptual design that they drew up was not followed, the one that is proposed right now is not unacceptable to the city.
Okay, so there, and there is no sharing of the street anymore. I mean, that...
There is sharing of the street. No, there is an ingress egress that the street will be shared between the two developments.
Okay. All right, very good. Next, we are on to Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair Sharp. You know, I have a great... I understand everyone wants to develop their property. This is the third time in this city that there has been a challenge to the Florida area ratio. It was in 99, about 2005, and then it was again in 2010. We never thought that this would be coming down from the state level. This is attempts to take away local control. I have stated that before, and that's not the developer's fault. It is a taking of city rights by the state. Now, we are saddled with the ADU law, which I am particularly concerned about because it excludes the public from saying anything. That is the law as of a year or two ago. Well, we may agree or disagree with this. This is what we're saddled with. But this is not the only development in this city that is producing gigantic houses. I'll be polite and not call them monster homes. We'll call them McMansions. Because each of these lots, they're big. You know, I live in a small, tiny area, and we have a current battle going over a very, very large house that's going in, 5,000-square-foot lot. So, you can understand the sensitivities in my neighborhood. This is not the... This is the third time we've run through this in the last 20 years. And it probably won't be the last one either. So, these are relatively large lots. They're 8,000 to 9,000. I would like to know what the... I mean, the city has established laws that were fought and put into place for Florida area ratio. We all have. As I stated before, I have personal reasons. I lost a child during, in 2005, the night after we were fighting about Florida area ratio. A lot of us have a lot of things put into this. Well, that has nothing to do with what's going on now. The governor doesn't care that anyone lost a child, evidently, but we have the ADU laws right now. So, the public right now is having to deal with houses that are too big for the lot. Has no problem with the developer, whatever. Okay, that's what's happening. But how do we deal with this? I'd like to know what the actual agreed current laws now would allow a house on that site to be. Are the 500-foot ADUs, if they were bigger, would they have to pay property taxes? And what about if the church is sold behind this? You're going to have housing in there. You're going to have to have privacy. Thank you.
Sorry, before we go on, in terms of property taxes, I believe, you know, whatever the total building is assessed at, that's what the property taxes will be. There's no no exemption for that. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? Or are there no property taxes on the ADU section of the properties?
That sounds right to me, but I have been researching this area about property taxes. Sorry.
Yeah, I know for impact fees, there's a... It depends on the size of the ADU as to whether...
Pardon me, Chair Sharp.
Okay, go ahead.
The new square footage of any ADU, whether it's brand-new construction attached to brand-new construction or if it's new construction attached to existing homes or if it's renovation of an old sun porch. If it's new habitable space, it will be reassessed by the assessor, and it will be subject to all the typical property taxes based on, as you say, based on the assessment at that time. So, if you increase the size of your house, the assessor gets notified and the assessment is... the increase is eligible for reassessment depending on the assessor's determination.
Right, but the impact fees are based on the size of the ADU. Below a certain size, there's no impact fees. Is that true?
Yeah, the state law precludes certain impact fees if the ADU meets the state requirements.
Right. Is that 800, under 800 or under 750? I can't remember. Pew, do you remember?
Under 750.
Under 750. Okay, that's what I thought.
750.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move now to John May Chin. Welcome, John May.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jen May, and I'm a homeowner of 2852 Cherryland Drive. I agree with Sue Jane. I also have some concerns on the Lot 6 second floor balcony. Lot 6 would be right next to my house, and the variance of second-story balcony will expose my family room if this plan's approved. For privacy concerns, my family would like to ask the city council to disapprove the construction and variance of second-story balcony on Lot 6, please. My family room and the living room are right next to Lot 6's garage. There is an eight-feet-tall, six-feet-wide clear sliding door in my family room facing the Lot 6 garage. My family's outdoor and indoor activities will be exposed and will be viewed. and will be viewed through lot six's balcony if the variance of second story balcony is approved. We do not think the second floor east window of the lot six shall open below the five feet high privacy window line. And the resolution is just the mitigation of privacy issues. The impacted areas are inside and outside of my family room, the yard, um, which are, you know, th- these areas. Scanning does not work well at night, and it will take years for the trees grow. People from the balcony or or second floor window of lot six can see through when the lights are on at night. We think the construction of lot six second story and the balcony will impact my family's privacy. And we hope the city council can take our concerns in consideration and disapprove the construction and variance of lot six second story and the balcony of lot six. Um, we I we did receive comments from Alok, but that was right before this meeting. And I do, I did not have time to go through his comments.
Okay, finish up. You have five seconds. Okay. Great. Um, I did want to point out that the second story balconies, which have been an issue throughout the city, they're not variances. Those are, those are allowed. No variance is required. So, yeah, ju- just that terminology implies that we're granting them something that they're not entitled to, which is not true. But I'll look, would you like to address some this issue on on lot six?
Sure. So, um, thanks for the opportunity. So we, like Brienne pointed out, we do have the privacy screens as mandated by the Cupertino Municipal Code towards lot six on parcel C that the previous commander mentioned. And second, as we carefully designed our balconies to be not facing the neighbors but facing the street. So with those two conditions, I think we meet the requirements of it. These are small balcony and then the second story uh, uh, second story window is also screened as shown by Brienne. And I think I also wanted to address the previous comment data from the HOA. If you refer to sheet C three, section S three, it shows that we are pretty much in line with the height of the neighboring parcel C, and this was signed by a civil engineer and a surveyor. So that is also available and validated by Public Works Engineer, as Brienne mentioned. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Steve Kelly. Welcome, Steve.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I I looked at this project as, you know, housing especially close to Deans College is very important. McCollum is a major thoroughfare. We have declining, declining school enrollment in the Cupertino school system. And it makes sense to increase housing in this area. I like the fact that all the units are going to have ADUs because obviously we need housing for teachers and for students that go to Deans College. Regarding balconies, you know, obviously, I guess you could plant mature trees. Typically, that's what's done with people when they don't want to see the balconies. But I would also say that the fact that this project's going through, it is adding another one point three million for various programs, including critically needed housing. So I'm supportive of the project. I think it makes sense to put more housing where it's needed, where it can help local schools and benefit students and teachers in the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Steve, next we are on to HP Jin. Welcome.
Uh, I will skip. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, then we are on to Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So based on what I spoke of earlier, this is essentially, to me, a six pack of what I described. Um, I I'll point out some pluses for me on this project. The, it's, it seems like from what I can tell from the tiny images that I can see, um, that four of the six porches are not covered, which I think is an excellent thing. I believe it's lot one and six that are covered. And I'm not sure what the designation is, but also lots one and six do have. Well, I won't go into that. So I just feel like this is another project that's that's going to take advantage in a way that I mentioned earlier in the meeting. Also, um, I'm really disappointed. I attended Zoom for the ERC meeting, and I understood that there was going to be further soil clean testing because I know this property from years ago. I know how it was used. I've seen it maybe six months ago and seen how it's decayed in condition. And I think it's unfair to whoever may eventually live there and the people surrounding it, that that is not being done. So I'm disappointed in this, this new attempt or success in getting um, further study of the soil done. You know, I I feel for the neighbors in some respects on Cherry Lane Drive. This is going to make their private street a lot less private. I also would ask that you please consider what this is going to be like on this street during construction. I live on a wide street with construction happening often on one house at a time. And the traffic from the trucks, the deliveries, the the noise, the dirt, the the litter, the et cetera, et cetera, is bad. And I'm not in a cul-de-sac where six things are happening at once. I, or that's not the right description, but you know what I'm talking about. So please do something to help with extra mitigation for that.
Oh, Peggy, welcome Peggy.
I didn't hear you.
No, sorry, I was muted. I tried to mute, so.
Okay.
No noise. Go ahead.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. Um, I have two. I agree with what Lisa Warren had stated. I have two comments. Since there is a thirty day clock on projects that invoke the Housing Accountability Act, and this developer has invoked this. Was the council, planning commission, and the public notified when this clock started? Neglecting to notify people is not the first time this has happened. Beta Brothers and I believe Canyon View Projects slipped through using this tactic. It has to stop. Please find out if people were notified, and if not, why, and what can be done to prevent this from happening again. The other thing is, since the developer has committed to doing the cleanup or and what was decided on uh, the ERC, put it in writing, the staff report, the the presenter, staff presenter said that it was in the draft resolution. I'd like to see it displayed to show us where it says that. Uh, Lisa mentioned that additional soil testing was supposed to be done. Um, put it in writing in the resolution uh, because people are going to be living here and they're going to have children. And it would be horrible to ha- build on a site that potentially has problems. Contamination was found. So, uh, please make sure that it's in writing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Subash Mandana. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Subash Mandanapu, and I would like to support this project, which helps much needed housing, especially in the areas where there is a huge employment opportunities, where we have to commute a day in the morning and, sorry, an hour, hour and a half in the morning and an hour and a half in the evening, which loses time that you need to spend with the family. And projects like these, especially with ADUs, um, as can help, uh, much needed housing closer to employment opportunities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being so brief. And last, we have Carl Brown. Welcome, Carl.
Uh, good evening, and thank you. And I too will be brief. I recognize it's a late hour. My name is Carl Brown. I am a resident of Cupertino. And I support this development based upon the research that I've done and the discussions that I've heard this evening. Before I get into any more detail, I do want to say thank you for those of you in the in the planning committee and those of you in the planning office. I recognize a lot of work has gone into what's been presented, and I recognize those on the planning commission are spending their evenings listening to a lot of different viewpoints. Um, but the reason why I support this is because as a resident of Cupertino, uh, finding an affordable place to live, whether it's renting or buying, is extremely challenging, as all of us probably know. This goes to help address that situation as it was discussed in the presentation from the city as well as from Kelly. Um, furthermore, the the current situation is that the existing property is an ISO. Uh, and even even the person who's against the development has indicated it's deteriorating rapidly over the last six months. This is an opportunity for us to deal with an ISO, and it is an opportunity for us to deal with housing challenges. The proposed development is compatible with other homes. It was expressed that the homes are large. That is what people want these days. That is what, you know, I want as as someone who's looking for a place to rent or to buy. Um, and so for those reasons, I support this project, and that's it. I'm, I will yield my minute and fifteen seconds back.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We have one more person that raised their hand. Uh, Bumaya Alashetti, welcome.
Uh, this is Bumaya Alashetti. So I am the south neighbor of lot six. I'm happy to see that the garage is going away. New construction is coming up, so I welcome the project. Um, so actually, I'm happy the developer has worked with me to alleviate my concerns about the privacy because, you know, I am exactly on the red side. So instead of twenty feet, it is becoming about thirteen feet. Um, so but here, you know, developer is willing to work with me, and so I'm happy with him. So and I appeal again, so Alok, take care of the concerns of the east side neighbor. I think she is probably, you know, as a junior concern, but you have been very good with us. So make sure that how you can come up with innovative solutions. Um, so I'm sure you will come up with some innovative solution. Um, so, but I am also concerned about the ADUs. So ADUs, it looks like cheating by the city or by the city or by the state. Um, so to the public. So I think, you know, in lot six, ADU is, you know, just four feet from the uh, from the fence. So I thought, you know, the before, in the the spacing between the wall and the fence is from the security point of view, especially from the fire safety point of view. So we are violating the law. So I'm not, you know, you know, holding the developer's responsibility. I think it is city, and I think the state is cheating the residents. It is very bad when bringing the ADU so close to the fence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And and I don't think that anyone disagrees with that about the ADUs, that four feet being too close. But that is the state law, and we are obligated to, um, to abide by it. Um, so, yeah, there's not much we can do about that. Uh, so now we can bring it, there's no more uh, attendees that wish to speak, so we can bring it back to the planning commissioners. So I will go first. I've been taking copious notes, and I have several questions here. The biggest concern that I have, and being in the ERC meeting, is uh, the cleanup of the contamination of this site. I know that it's been, um, done as an infill development that's exempt from SEQA. Um, and you know, given the the health concerns of the contamination of the site, and I'd like to know who who is supervising and approving the cleanup of the site? Is it the county? Is it the state? Is it the city? Can um, someone from Planning Commission or the city attorney advise me of this?
Um, I can try to address this.
Okay.
So the conditions of approval regarding the mitigation of the site is, as I said, it was voluntarily agreed to by the applicant. The condition of approval actually rests that authority upon the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health. So that cleanup is going to be done under their oversight.
Okay. So just out of curiosity, if the property owner had decided not to voluntarily do this, there's actually nothing we could do. You could just build the housing right on top of the contaminated soil. Is that, is that accurate?
That's not necessarily accurate. I mean, we do, in order to go through the process, we still require soil testing and reports related to that to make sure that there, you know, isn't something that comes up. Um, those are part of our ordinance requirements. We codified those requirements actually late last year. Um, and they were, I guess this project actually kind of beat the the implementation of that ordinance by a few weeks.
So 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 state law would not override our ordinance?
Right, because those are objective environmental protection standards that we have. So we could, we could require site cleanup if if these two is required, and if it indicates that there are problems with the site.
Okay, and then in the ERC meeting, there were proposals to require additional, um, boring sites for testing the soil, but that was, um, not approved by the ERC, even though I voted for it and council member Moore voted for it. So we don't have any authority to require additional soil borings other than what has already been proposed. Is that true?
That is correct. And again, like I said, the cleanup is going to be done under the oversight of the DEH, and if they do have anything to add to that, they're going to figure out. Um, they are the experts on site cleanup in this matter.
Okay. And let's see. Okay, and this is one. I'm going to go into this. And Peggy Griffin spoke on this, and it upsets me, too. This whole thirty day, um, thirty day window, we really need someone, the city manager, to address the issue that we are never notified um, before of the thirty day timeline and when it starts and when it expires. And, you know, we ran into this in Beta Brothers, and now we're running into this here. And I don't know what we can do to fix this problem. And, you know, I'm going to speak to the city manager about this and see if she can address it, because this is really not an acceptable situation.
Sir, um, I I would like to reiterate that the thirty day mark applies to every housing development. So every housing development that we uh, that the the city receives as an application is subject to a thirty day requirement. To the extent that we can retain the planning commission's discretion on certain issues, we do. We advise the applicant that, you know, this does not meet our standards or not. Um, with regard to the Bette Brothers project, I can't speak to that. That is not on the agenda for tonight. Um, with regard to the Bate Brothers project, I can't speak to that. That is not on the agenda for tonight. However, with regard to this project, I do not believe that there is, uh, that, that there are any objective standards that this particular project does not need.
Okay, well, going to that, um, looking at our parking ordinance, which requires two off-site spaces and the two garage spaces and the two driveway spaces. It seems like this project does not have the two off-site spaces. And they're trying to substitute a third driveway space for that second off-site space. You know, and that, it may seem petty, but when you're dealing with an ADU, uh, you probably do want the two off-site spaces. And now somehow we don't have them anymore. And because it's been more than thirty days, we can't go back and require them.
So Chair Sharif, if I may.
Yes.
Just to go back, typically the evaluation of objective standards is, is, is evaluated by staff. And so certainly within that thirty day window, that's, that's their charge to do. Um, but I, you know, of course we can look at, look at this a little further and determine with this, other processes we can engage in. With respect to the, to the parking question you just raised, um, um, nineteen point one two four oh four oh actually provides that if no, uh, on-street parking is available, it provides that those spaces be off-site. And here, um, they're, they're, the project contemplates one on, uh, street parking and, and one off-street parking. So it actually, uh, conforms to the parking requirement irrespective of the thirty days. So it's already on its own complies with our parking ordinance.
But on-street parking where? There's no, are you talking on the private street?
Correct. The code, code requires that on public or private streets. Oh, so both.
Okay. So, so why is it even there that, that it divides up the parking between garages, driveways and, and off-site? I mean, if, if it actually doesn't, if you actually can get away with that.
All the code contemplates is in, in total that there will be six parking spaces uh, in any combination between onsite and offs, offs, I'm sorry, onsite and on-street parking. And so in, um, in this particular project does comply with that requirement by providing five onsite and one on-street.
Okay. Cause, cause when I read it today, it's, it said two off-site and.
Only if there is no on-street parking.
Okay. All right. Very good. Um, all right. Um, I believe that's all I have. So we can go on to other commissioners. Who would like to go next? Mooney, you have your hand raised. So go ahead.
Okay. So I have quite a few questions. So bear with me, please. Um, so what is this thirty day notice stuff? How is this supposed to work? I'm kind of confused. Right? So like, let me use myself as an example, right? I submit some outrageous plan and, you know, and thirty day clock runs out and, you know, planning commission, nobody knew about it. And, you know, now I'm kind of, you know, I can run away with my plan. Is that how it works? I'm just curious.
Um, state law allows, um, planning staff, uh, rather the city, uh, thirty days to identify any manner in which a project is not uh, compliant with any standards that the city has adopted. And so there is no notice with regard to that. It just requires staff to evaluate the project and inform the applicant about any conflicts.
So, so we have been adhering to that, like, you know,
Yes.
Every project within thirty days, we are saying, you know, hey, you comply with all, all of our requirements or no, here are the issues you need to go fix it. And they, they come back with, you know, mitigation, then thirty, thirty day clock starts again? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay. Thanks for the clarification. So I, I'd like to understand this five feet parkland contention, uh, cherry land homeowners association is raising. So I'm, I'm totally confused. Like, you know, where is that five feet parkland is supposed to be?
It's not parkland. It's, it's a, uh, parks.
Strip?
Park strip, yes. Um, uh, i- i- in general, um, the way that they had contemplated that this site would develop, which is basically assuming that this site would develop the way that they had designed it. Um, that was not approved by the city. That was just a conceptual plan, just to indicate that there is some manner in which, this is one manner in which the private street could be com- uh, complete.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just an extra five feet that they had anticipated that the property line would be uh, five feet further west of where it is proposed right now.
Okay, okay. But so the, the requirement is not twenty feet from the street, right? The setback.
There is no, yes, from the property line. Yeah, there's still the front property setback is still twenty feet and they do need that.
Okay. And so they contemplated no extra five feet from strip in addition to that twenty feet requirement.
Correct.
Interesting. So are those homes complying to that? Do, 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 are they twenty-five feet off from the street?
They are, no, they still are twenty feet from their property line. It's not twenty-five feet from the street. It's the setbacks are measured from the property line and they do comply with the twenty feet from the property line.
No, the, this one that, the one in discussion right now is twenty feet from the property line.
Correct.
And, and so where is this five feet is supposed to come?
So the five feet cherry land, when they came up with the conceptual plan for how this street might be developed in the future, had assumed that the new property line for this particular development would be five feet further west of where it is proposed right now.
Okay. So, so five feet further west, that means they, they were expecting a much broader street? Is that what it is?
Not just street, but just improvements, whether that's sidewalk, whether that's park strip, whether it's something.
Okay. Interesting. So they expected the property line itself to be five feet further and then twenty, twenty feet set back from there?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Got it. Um, so the cherry land HOA issues, are they settled or are they still contentious? Because now I'm kind of confused reading through the, the comments and the nodes. There's some seventy K pay, reference to a seventy K payment and, you know, ten thousand dollar payments and all that stuff. So, uh, it almost appears like, you know, they are working together and, you know, settling their issues. But then here, here they are saying, you know, no, don't approve it because, you know, we still have issues to work through. So I'm, I'm kind of lost.
Correct. So those are private matters, sir. I mean, you know, we, it'll be contingent, any, uh, any permits or any development on the property would be contingent upon making sure that those are all cleared up before we issue permits.
Okay, before we issue permit. But then we can still go ahead and approve it because, you know, it, it meets all the
Correct.
code requirements and everything. It's, but then the project for, to get permit, you know, they need to resolve issues between them. Okay. Um, are the ADUs going to be built or are, are, are they just, you know, getting the approvals for future build out?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Uh, we are proposing to build everything in one go.
Okay, okay. That's good. Um, so how far the ADUs are from the, um, the fence wall?
So in some cases, the ADUs are about five feet, ten inches, five feet. They, they vary. I think the smallest setback, I think is four feet eight or something like that.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
So, uh, I know there are a lot of concerns, you know, being raised on that. And when I saw the plan, you know, that, that's a first thing that caught my eye as well, like because the property, you know, the front and back setbacks and the side setbacks, you know, they all seem to be okay except for this one piece. But unfortunately, you know, it's the state law. There is not much we can do about it. I know a lot of residents are concerned about it. And I think, you know, I, I want the residents in the community to understand, you know, our hands are tied with this state laws that are being passed to override local zoning laws, right? So, so if you have any issues, you know, please, you know, take it up with, you know, your state representatives, write to them what they are doing. If you really want, you know, local control, that's where, you know, we need to be knocking on the doors, not here because now our hands are tied. Right? So, okay. Uh, that's pretty much it. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mooney. And now we will move on to our Wong. Welcome, our Wong.
Hey, thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions and I think some of them are along the lines of Mooney's. I'll try to go past them if they are. Uh, my main concerns, environmental concerns. I really don't want the same thing that happened to Valco to happen here. I think that's a disservice to our residents when they discover that an ex-junkyard auto body site might have underground storage units that were removed and not proper adequate soil testing. Um, I am really disappointed in our city staff for not advocating for that in the ERC. I think that's something that was really important. Um, I think we need to be clear on what environmental concerns we should be worried about, given this was a junkyard and had underground storage tanks. Um, I know in the ERC minutes, there were a number of things around, you know, grading and expansive soil, the normal stuff, the hazardous impact. Um, I know Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health is taking care of that. I just find that we really should be more proactive about residents' safety and future residents' safety. And, and that to me was a concern here. Um, I'm also on the same page with a lot of our fellow, uh, commission members. I do not like the abuse of the thirty day notice laws. This has continued. We are never notified at the beginning of the notice, especially for large projects at this. I agree, we probably don't need a notification for every project that's happening in Cupertino. It's not like we're bustling down of massive construction projects. But when we have large projects like this, we don't have advanced notification. And I think it's going to be imperative for the city council to require a notice for projects over two dwellings or three dwellings or maybe a square footage requirement. Um, I'm not sure about the parking ordinance. I understand the city attorney's position on that. Um, I, I interpreted it a little bit different, but I'm not the lawyer there. Um, but I understand that they are meeting the parking requirements that are there. Um, but, uh, and I also want to reiterate the point from, uh, Vice Chair Madhav Patli. If you don't like these ADU laws, um, and you don't like the takedown of local control, you really need to vote out the state legislators we have that support this. In our case, it's state senator and assembly, Dave Cortez on the state center side and Evan Lowe, please let them know that this local control takedown is really offensive and really not helping the housing affordability situation. Um, I also want to know what the mitigation plan is for these environmental issues. I know that there's something in place. I'm a little bit worried about this. And more importantly, um, I, I don't know how true this is, but I keep hearing this from neighbors and from people I've met while visiting the site. There are stories that a missing person is related to this owner. They never found the body. She's the ex-daughter-in-law of the previous owner. So maybe when we do the search during excavation, I think we should be a little bit more careful. Maybe we'll find something there. But I am extremely concerned when the city staff sides with the developers' interests and not the residents. And I just will reiterate that again. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, um, um, Commissioner Wong, did you want a response to any of that from staff?
I'm happy to take a response from staff and the applicants.
Okay.
Um, I'd just like to reiterate that we have evaluated the project against the objective standards that the city has and our recommendation is based on that.
Okay. Um, next we have Commissioner Kapil, welcome.
Yeah, I guess, uh, um, my first comment is regarding ADU, you need to follow some, Paul Aldo has done it. I mean, uh, I, maybe somebody can forward their, um, uh, their city council resolution or, uh, so they have taken a stand against ADU and how they have done it, I haven't gone into the details. But, uh, that is a city who has stood against, uh, the, uh, um, obtuse, uh, standards put forth, uh, on the, on the residents of the city. So that is something probably should be considered and should be read or at least should be calculated, uh, uh, among the planning commissioners. Second thing is, um, I just want to know, I just a very common sense question. Uh, I visited this site and, uh, there is a, very next to it, which is cherry land, I think they call it. They have a similar development and they have a street, uh, private street. Now, in this proposal also, there is a private street out there, right? So, uh, and McClellan Road, if you notice, is not that wide. I mean, uh, they, and to make the matters worse, city has put a, some kind of a bike, uh, 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 lane there, which makes that, uh, already a constricted road much more constricted. So now you have two, uh, dwellings side by side. Each one having a three or four developments and another having a six development. All the cars have to go inside this, uh, 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 these two, uh, developments. Will there be a, a, a chewing problem on this constricted road if somebody has to do it? Uh, all of them arrive or it will create a kind of a jam onto the main road itself because the, these two dwellings are all multi-dwellings. And they, all the cars have to go inside, uh, through the private street to enter to their, uh, respective dwelling. So that is something probably a, 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 um, staff has to look at it, uh, I guess, uh, if that such a situation can happen. Um, third thing is, I just noticed that, uh, the, uh, one of the comments in the email was a five feet for the Lot Six. That's a privacy wallet, that is a city code, uh, right? You can't just violate that in every single dwelling, uh, uh, new development, just let the people bury the windows which goes below five feet. If it is a ci- city challenge, you need to adhere to it. If it is, it is, um, uh, in Lot Six, it is facing the, the somebody's house. So probably that is, probably needs to be addressed. It cannot be just, uh, uh, let it fall through the, the cracks. Um, and the fourth thing is, if, uh, since this particular, uh, development, there is a concern about the soil, I, I understood all the discussion, uh, that it is a county's responsibility and all that stuff. But the thing is that, uh, uh, if there is a contamination in the soil and probably it is more likely because the street, uh, McLaren is, uh, high, uh, highly traveled street. And there's a catalytic, uh, converters on the cars and they, they pollute. And they will basically pollute the, the, uh, adjoining property which is right on the, on that road. So if, if there is something like this and if it is not in city's purview to object on it, is there a way you can put a notice that if it is not a meeting? Because, uh, if the children, uh, play there or they come over there, that is something not, you would like to, like that to happen. Uh, uh, so either, uh, there should be some kind of a notification if it is not addressed. Uh, in case it is not addressed, uh, because it is not in your purview. That's all I have to say.
So Commissioner Kapil, in case what is not addressed, maybe I.
The soil contamination.
Okay, well, yeah. Well, I mean, according to what we heard, Department of Environmental Health is going to, um, look at the soil to whatever extent, uh, they do. Um, yeah, I'm not happy with this either, but I don't think there's much we can do about that.
At least, uh, if it is a health hazard and it is not addressed and you cannot enforce it, then, uh, there should be some kind of a notification procedure for that, for the, uh, rest of the people to know about it.
Yeah. Can staff respond to that? I mean, I, as I understand it, the soil contamination will be addressed. Um,
Correct.
Is that accurate?
That is an accurate statement. The soil contamination will be addressed, um, to the extent that the applicant and property owner has to disclose anything, uh, to new owners. I guess the, uh, real estate disclosures will take care of that. Uh, with regard to, uh, Commissioner Kapil's, uh, question about queuing on McClellan, that is, um, actually, uh, sir, the, uh, private pro- uh, street is going to be shared between the two developments. So there isn't going to be another new street, uh, that is proposed for this development. Um, and queuing has been evaluated by the Public Works Transportation Division. Um, with regard to, I, I heard something about a five-foot setback. Um, the, the proposal on Lot Six meets all the setbacks that are required for that property. Um, so.
Uh, no, it's not about setback. It was in the email, if you read that email, uh, which I, uh, forgot who sent that. It is about, uh, the window, uh, uh, second floor window, uh, load the height.
Yeah. So, um, uh, to the extent that there are any windows that have sill heights that are less than five feet, one inch, there will be privacy protection required and planted for that as required by the city's codes. Um, and I, I'm sorry, I know that you had mentioned four things. I caught three. I may have missed one. Um, I think the third issue that you may have brought up is the one that I'm missing right now.
Uh, was it the traffic congestion? I.
Uh, uh, which I addressed. It's already been, um.
Right. Plus, plus we, we can only do VMT, not.
Correct.
Level of service. I mean, the level of service may be affected, but the VMT will probably not be significant.
Correct. And, um, yeah, I'm sorry. I can't remember the third one. If you remind me, I'm happy to respond to it.
I don't know which one was the third one, but, uh, the. I don't know which one was the third one, but the one I addressed was the, I think you said, you will take care of the, the window ceiling height. And the second thing is, is about the queuing aspect of the traffic, which is getting into this. And the other one was related to the soil.
Correct, which I addressed.
And the fourth, I believe that there was one more. I'm sorry. I don't have that right now.
If it comes back to you, sir, I'm happy to answer that question too.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Let's move on to Commissioner-
Oh, yes, just one more thing, before you go forward. So, the one thing I want to ask you is that, what is your off-site parking mean?
Off-site parking means on-street parking, which they are-
On-street means which street?
On private or private street. In this case, there is parking on the private street.
So it's not on the McClellan, right?
It is not on the-
Can it not be on the McClellan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we are on to Commissioner Saxina. Welcome.
Hello, folks. Good to be back. First of all, thank you to all my, to the city staff and the presenters, and also my fellow planning commissioners. You have not left much for me to say. I will repeat Commissioner Wong's thing to what everybody who's listening. Please start writing to your state representatives to take back local control. You know, the planning commission or the way the country was set up was to have a distributed set of power, where the state or the federal sets some guidelines, and the local people adapt it for their own needs. That structure is breaking down. And it is creating situations where even for very basic things, like how high the homes could be, how close you can be to the lot boundary, which sort of define how a particular region or area looks, are being determined by Sacramento in this case, but indirectly by special interests who want to benefit from those. And this will not end unless and until the people push back. So that's the first thing. Please push back. Commissioner Wang wanted us to vote against them. I think, against incumbents, I think that is, of course, your choice. But I would say at least start calling regardless of what you vote for. Let them know that you are unhappy with the state of affairs. Here, it's essentially un-American. It's to take away all power from the local peoples to govern their, the way they live in the local community. And unless and until you speak up, it will not end. And many of the times, these mandates are defeating, and they don't serve the purpose, what they aim for. Like the low-income housing, the below-market housing, which requires us to create housing for the lowest economic strata in one of the most expensive neighborhoods in the country. It doesn't make sense, because there are a lot of people who work here who won't qualify, but who would really benefit, and the city and the community would benefit if they could live in the city, which not have to commute two hours or whatever they do just to come and work in the city.
Okay, Commissioner, I think we're, we're kind of straying from the agenda.
That's okay. Agenda, I mean, anyway, it's all over the place. We don't have much to do. So, so let me speak my mind here, okay?
Michael, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I like to invite the Commissioner Saxina if you have questions with staff about this project. We certainly will-
Oh, yeah, I'm getting to that. Okay, I'm getting to that. So, so that's the thing. So I think, coming back to this specific project, the, I think the, the land use or the fact that the land was contaminated, I am still at loss about what the current process is. And I would encourage the city council and whoever is in power to needed to put together a new ordinance around this, because we keep on hearing this 30-day thing again and again, and it's simply against the spirit of us keeping the neighbors and the people safe. If there is a history of, of land use which could lead to contamination, it doesn't mean that we can't build on that. We just need to be more careful when we dig. We need to do surveys. We need to take mitigation. But for somehow, it's seen as something which can be overlooked, because it not only affects the people who are going to live there, it also affects the neighbors if we don't have proper environmental mitigation while the work is happening, while the excavation is happening. And I will, again, I don't understand all the details, and I will trust the city staff and just say that, you know, it will be done by process, but it somehow doesn't pass the, the test of trust, building trust. And that's where we need to address that. Coming back to the specific project, I think I do want you to know a little bit more about what steps have been already taken to address the concern about the balcony on lot six. I know the, the, the project presenter mentioned that they don't face the road. They don't, they face the road, they don't face directly, but there was a certain concern raised by the particular neighbor about their privacy. Is there, is there a way to plant more trees or something which can help protect? Maybe on side of the road where it is there, or it's simply not possible to do that? I think that's one question. And I think the, the, the second thing which I wanted to know a little bit about is about the ADU and whether, whether the city has any plans or any ordinance that when an ADU is built as part of a new construction, is there like, something in the middle which, between building all the way to the lot line or whatever the current state law allows versus honoring the current setbacks? The point here is this, that when we are designing a new, a new site, we can always construct and design in a manner that the spirit of the setback law, laws, which is essentially designed to ensure wind and sun between neighbors, is honored, even if we don't honor the exact setback set out by the single-family laws. So is there something in the middle, especially for brand-new construction, which encourages architects to honor the spirit of the laws without having to go five feet or 10 feet or 20 feet as required? And I think that is an open question to the city staff and to anybody who's listening, is how do we go about fixing that? Thank you.
Chair Sharp, would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
At the risk of sounding that I am a pro-developer in this response, state law prohibits us from requiring anything on streamlined ADUs. We cannot consider any standards other than, is it four feet from rear and side setbacks? Is it any taller than 16 feet? As long as the ADU is 800 square feet or smaller, they can construct it. They do not have to adhere to floor area, lot coverage, setbacks, any other requirements that the city imposes on them. So with that said, as proposed, for much and many of the ADUs that this development includes, the setbacks are actually higher than four feet. There is possibly only one ADU where it is under five feet, but not entirely close to four feet. So that is the response with regard to the ADUs. The developer could have entirely chosen not to show these ADUs on these plans and brought these plans in with their building permit. That is another way. I mean, this is a ministerial decision. It is not something that we can, that the planning commission can do while making their decision on this project. With regard to the balcony, this, the balcony, Commissioner Saxina, I think you were asking question, follow-on question.
I can wait. Sure, sure.
With regard to the balcony on lot six, the balcony is facing the front. And that particular lot has a driveway that, that is, which it faces. And so that balcony is not, there isn't room to plant trees along the driveway.
Thanks, Vee. I think first of all, I like to address the thing you made about pro-developer. I think each of us is doing the job best as we can. So I personally don't like those phrasings. As the planning commission, we have to encourage sensible growth. And, and that, a part of that is being, doing, encouraging whatever is done to encourage sensible growth. So I think if anybody has used those phrases, I think they are not appropriate. So I'll just, I mean, I, I know the city staff has a tough job managing many constraints, and we should do that. At the same time, I think if we could do a little bit more to work around the 30-day rule or whatever we have, so that it earns trust. I think end of the day, it's about the trust in the process rather than anything else. And currently, the way it functions doesn't engender trust. To the question about streamlined ADU, so a brand-new construction is also considered streamlined ADU? Just confirming.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Saxina. I just want to point out that even before all these ADU laws, you could still build an ADU in Cupertino. And, but the difference was, you still had to abide by all of our standards. You, the floor area ratio, there was no exemption, and there was no exemption for the setback. But we had ADUs built, you know, before all these ADU laws were passed to make it, you know, to bypass basically our, the floor area ratio and the setbacks are the big things. So, but, but the law is what it is, and we, you know, we have to abide by it. And I see Mooney is, raised his hand again, or was your hand just up from before?
No, I raised the hand again.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So I'm on video meet, because now I'm eating my dinner, so my apologies. I don't want you guys to know what I'm eating. I, I do want to thank the developer for working with, you know, the neighbors and the community. That's, you know, very refreshing to hear, because usually, you know, I see residents raising concerns, and, you know, developer, you know, not listening, but that's not the case here. The developer seemed to reach out to the community and held quite a few meetings. And, and the neighbors acknowledge that as well. So I really, really like to thank the developer for doing that. Thank you.
Okay, well, if no one else has any, anything to say, I think we can move on to a motion to adopt the draft resolutions. Would someone like to make those, that motion?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wong.
I think I don't read the whole motion. Actually, give me a second here. So.
You can share the, the presentation screen for the motion if that helps.
Yeah, let's do that. That would actually help a lot. I'm pulling up the notes here real quickly. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Are you talking about under the recommended actions? Right, okay. Yeah, I have that here on my iPad as well.
Make a motion that the planning commission adopt proposed draft resolutions recommending that city council, one, find the actions exempt from CEQA, two, approve tentative map application TM 2021-006, approve two-story permits R-202040-041-042043045, and approve the minor residential permits RM 2022-015016022024025 and O26.
Wonderful. I will second that.
If I may, sir, I think-
Sir, I'm sorry. Did I miss something?
I think we may have, I think 044 for the R permit may be missing in the list.
Yeah, thank you. 044 is missing there. Sorry, I'm just looking at that as well. So. Two, four, four, four.
Yes, it is missing in the-
And please amend 044 for the two-story permits. Thank you.
Okay, well, now I will second it. Can we have a roll call?
Chair Sharp?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madapati?
Yes.
Commissioner Capil?
My yes is conditional on the soil contamination test passing. Otherwise, it is no.
Okay, yeah, please, please be clear. If it's no, if it's a no, say no.
If it is soil contamination cannot be approved, if it is beyond the jurisdiction of city and they cannot enforce, my answer, my vote is no.
Okay. Let's continue the roll call.
Commissioner Saxina?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wong?
I vote no for the same reasons that Commissioner Capil was putting up there. So, no, nay.
I just want to clarify, Commissioner Capil, this is a no, so I know how to word the motion.
Yes, as far as I understand, it is a no, because I do not have a clear idea about soil contamination enforcement at this point. So it is no.
Okay, thank you. So motion passes 3-2.
Very good. So thank you, everyone. It's about 8:30. So why don't we take a five-minute break before we go on to the next item on the agenda? So we'll reconvene here at 8:35. [Music] 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 Eight thirty-five. So we are back and we are on item number five, which is modification of an existing use permit U dash two thousand five dash oh four to allow above-ground crypts on a portion of the Gates of Heaven Cemetery. Application number M dash twenty twenty two dash oh oh two. The applicant is Heather Gloucester. Gates of Heaven Cemetery, location is two two five five seven Cristo Rey Drive. Assessor parcel number three four two six three oh oh two. And can we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Commission. Um, I would like to introduce, uh, John Martier, Senior Planner, who will be presenting this item and is the project planner for this project.
Thank you, Pew. Uh, good evening, uh, Cupertino community, uh, Chair Scharf and the planning commissioners. I'm John Martier, uh, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department, and I have been, um, the project manager for this, uh, project, uh, for the modification of the use permit as described by Chair Scharf. Um, again, this is the subject, uh, the modification of existing use permit to allow the above-ground crypts, uh, specifically, like we'll talk later on in the presentation, um, there'll be four above-ground cri- uh, above-ground crypts that are proposed as part of this modification. So a little background, um, about the, the parcel and the property in the cemetery. Uh, the cemetery was approved to, for operation, uh, while it was still in the county in nineteen sixty-two. Um, the fifty-eight acres, what, when they were approved, were approved as a memorial park with flat horizontal markers to be placed, um, on, you know, on the ground. And the thought behind that was that these flat horizontal markers would preserve some of the natural, um, contours, at least the appearance of the natural contours of the, of the cemetery, um, and better blended with the foothills. Um, in nineteen eighty-six, the city annexed, um, the parcel, um, and, um, surrounding the cemetery, uh, development occurred over the years, um, while preserving, um, some of the natural habitat, including the Ranch San Antonio County Park, uh, to the, to the southwest. Um, some of the development that was part of the, of the tripped property at one time, um, is not anymore, is Oak Valley Development to the northeast and PGME to the, uh, south, uh, southeast. Uh, prior approvals, so as it's been, uh, annexed into the city, um, the, the ownership of the cemetery, specifically the diocese of San Jose, has come in to modify the use permit and, um, to respond to, uh, changes, um, throughout the, or, or to really to address the needs of the community and in terms of what they want, uh, how they want their loved ones to be interred or how to be interred themselves in the, in the future. Um, in the staff report I did list, I'm not going to go through each, each single one, but as you could tell that if, with through the staff report, you can, you can see that, that, um, for the last thirty years and various occasions that the use permit has been modified or there's been a new use permit outside. Um, specifically with this, what tonight's application is modifying the use permit for two thousand five, which was a major, um, upgrade to facilities and change of, um, change of the operations and the type of, um, um, burials that were on site within the fifty-eight acres. Um, one of the things I highlighted, and it wasn't clear in the staff report, I want to make clear for the record, is that the use permit two thousand five did, uh, did allow above-ground markers. Um, however, they were allowed in areas where there were, uh, steps and, 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 uh, excuse me, and, and walls that, that would disguise the markers rather than have to just stick up out of the ground. Um, so to understand what the horizontal markers are, I just provide this photo right here of, of the site. You see that these are what the horizontal markers are. So when you hear, when, when you read the staff report and, and there was discussion about horizontal markers or you hear in the, in the presentation what horizontal markers are, this is what they are right there. And as you see, you know, they're very, you know, unless you go up to it, if you go from, if you, if you look at the cemetery from, from far away, it almost appears like they're not there, but they actually are when you come closer. Okay, uh, some of the future developments that are on this site as part of some prior approvals, um, were some of the, the pergola that you see dotted throughout the cemetery as well. Um, so the application request is for the All Souls portion, uh, All Souls Terrace portion of the, uh, of the cemetery, which is, uh, right there. Um, pretty much in the southern end, um, of the cemetery. Um, and it is for the addition of four above-ground crypts. As you see, this is a kind of a zoomed-in area of the, of the All Souls portion. Um, and the, the white rectangles right there are, are where the, 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 the crypts are supposed to be. And with the yellow, uh, landscaping and, and the, and the pathway leading to those crypts as well. Uh, what this, this next arrow is pointing to is the terracing that show where the, um, above-ground markers are, um, pretty much against the terrace walls. And I have some further photos to show you as well, what those would look like. Um, the sides of these crypts are about four feet tall, seven feet wide, and about eight feet long. Um, how this application started was that, um, a resident was visiting a loved one in the All Souls area and, and had notified the city that, um, a crypt had been placed and there, there had been possible preparation of, of, uh, the souls for three others. And so, once the city was notified of this, um, staff had reached out to the, the operators of the cemetery and a code enforcement file was opened. Um, pretty much around November of twenty twenty-one, about ten months ago. And so as typical with any code enforcement case throughout the city, you know, we offer, um, we allow the, um, the party that has, um, has, has, is subjected to code enforcement action to try to legalize what they've done. And that's, and that's what the, um, the diocese have done in this case, is to try to legalize these, um, these above-ground crypts. So this is a, a view of, a grander view of the All Souls, um, area right here on this, of the cemetery. As you see, um, the yellow era shows where the, the crypt is currently located with this, this yellow box right here showing the potential location, proposed location of the other three crypts, as well as the landscaping that was surrounded. As you can see in the terrace area, um, it might be a little more difficult to see the, the, the tombstones, um, against the terrace walls, but they are there. Um, that's one of the ways in, in two thousand and five that, um, it was, it was a way that the cemetery was able to put the tombstones there because the terrace walls kind of masked or, uh, ma- masked those tombstones from, from sight. And here's the, a closer, a different angle, but also a closer view. Again, you can see the, the existing, um, above-ground crypt right there and the proposed area where the, the crypts would be located in comparison with the terrace area in the All Souls section. So as part of the application request and, and review of the project, um, we had noticed in prior applications that many of the concerns, particularly two thousand and five, um, about any type of, of bug, non-hor horizontal markers, um, and any pushback from the community were, were from the residents, uh, surrounding the parcel itself. So we looked at the, at the area of where these crypts were proposed to be located. Um, we, we measured to the, how far they were from the closest residents, particularly from the Oak Valley Development to the, uh, northeast. And we found that the, the distance was about twelve hundred feet from Oak Valley and about eleven hundred feet from Stonebridge, which is the, uh, the other, um, uh, the, the, the townhome condominiums to the southeast. And so from, uh, this photo right here, uh, to the upper right is what a view would be of the Oak Valley development from the proposed area. Um, and this next one is a view to the Stonebridge development from the proposed area, kind of taken from that different angle. As you see, it's very difficult to see, um, those residential properties from, uh, the proposed site. So, um, prior to deemed this application complete, um, we requested that the, um, that the cemetery operators reach out to the community, knowing how sensitive this project was. Um, and so the applicant conducted outreach to the Oak Valley and Stonebridge communities as well as the adjacent properties. Um, about two hundred and twenty-four letters were sent out. Um, from those two hundred and twenty-four letters, uh, we did get one response, uh, from I say two over here because the other response was from the complainant, um, regarding who, who first notified the, the city of this issue. And as, as described, uh, in the staff report, the, you know, the issue that the, that the, uh, one neighbor had brought up had to do with, um, basically the incompatibility of the, uh, what he felt was the, um, of the, uh, of, of the crypts to the neighboring, um, horizontal markers as well as the, the terrace, uh, portions of the All Souls site. So, however, after posting of the staff report, uh, approximately eight members of the community expressed concern. Uh, most of those community members, um, have loved ones that are interned in this area as well. Um, and so to summarize some of the outreach in case, uh, some of the, the, uh, the feedback from, or at least some of the concerns, um, brought up by those, um, by those folks who, um, submitted written comments to the planning commission and to staff. Uh, number one was really the, they, they felt that these, these crypts were a disruption of the natural environment. Many of them mentioned that they had chosen, or their, their loved ones had chosen this site, the All Souls portion of the, of the cemetery because of its natural beauty and its, um, i- its views of the neighboring Rancho San Antonio Park. And so this, this crypt was kind of a disruption of that, and they felt that it, it kind of disrupted the vibe of, of the area, for lack of a better term. Um, another comment was that it lacks uniformity with, with the surrounding burial types as well, as we talked about. Most of the cemetery is, uh, the horizontal markers and/or, you know, if it's not horizontal markers, the other, the other two types are in, you know, nearby in the All Souls is, is a terrorist, um, burial grounds, and then further on the other side of the cemetery is a, is a mausoleum as, as well as some above-ground crematoria. Um, a few of the, of the folks who commented said, mentioned that they aren't necessarily against an above-ground crypt, but don't feel this is the appropriate area and would support, um, the cemetery looking or exploring other areas of, of, of the grounds to, to put these crypts. And one of the last comments that we were able to read into was that a lot of the, the commenters were concerned about how the crypts were placed. They were placed without any feedback from, um, the family members of those who have loved ones and in the near, nearby or, um, even residents. And it was done without the proper, going through the proper approval, the proper approval process, excuse me. That being said, um, like most of the other, uh, modifications, um, staff has, has, has historically, um, viewed any type of modification as being categorically exempt, and in this case, it's no different. Uh, this is per, you know, fifteen three oh one, uh, CEQA standard, uh, CEQA section, the fifteen three oh one existing facilities and fifteen three oh three new construction conversion of small structures. Um, if planning commission were to approve this, um, this modification, um, a specific resolution, I said, excuse me, a specific condition as part of this resolution is that the, the four above-ground crypts are approved to allow to eight deceased to be interred. Again, there are, um, there are, each crypt allows two, two, two persons to be interred. And no increase in the total number of burrows allowed the cemetery to permit with, with this approval. And if they were, if this were to be approved, any further modifications would have to go through modification to use permit and depending on the size also, uh, architectural side approval. Um, as, as, um, as noted in the staff report, um, the recommended actions of the planning commission adopted proposed draft resolutions to, uh, find the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA and approve these amendment, amendment, M twenty-two dash zero zero two. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, uh, before we move to members of the public, does the applicant have any presentation or wish to speak?
Hi, um, yes, I did have. Okay, I did have one addition that I wanted to make to Jiang's comments. Um, we had a permit approved in two thousand and eleven that added about twelve hundred more terrorist upright marker crypts that I didn't see, um, anywhere listed on both violation or the application. Um, this pergola here, our last, um, modification, this was moved to the veterans section, so that is no longer existing. But there was a note that we, there, we don't have a master plan on file, but we do have a previous approval per twelve hundred, um, above-ground headstones previously, um, from two thousand and eleven that you can see here, which is much closer to the neighbors, which is why we've never done it. Um, and that note is on Jiang's presentation as the two, uh, March two thousand and eleven, um, modification at the time. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll move to members of the public. Um, please raise your hand to speak. You'll have three minutes. We will start with Jennifer Griffin. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Very interesting, lovely cemetery. Uh, my husband's father is buried in the, um, veterans section and we, his family has other family members there. Um, I just was curious, with this type of the crypt, I've seen this before at Oak Hill and up in Colma cemeteries, and normally they are designated by family. You may see a larger crypt. It, it's a, a different style of burials, especially for families. And especially in Colma, I have seen some that are multi-generational in families. Is this, i- is this something that was associated with a certain family? Or, or is this a desire by a certain family to have a crypt of this type of situation? Um, I've seen larger ones, uh, in some of the older sections at Oak Hill. Um, that's a big cemetery. We've got probably forty family members buried there for the last hundred and forty years. So I, I'm really wondering if this is a family desire to have something like this, um, at Rancho San, at, at this cemetery? Or is this, who will be, uh, that sounds terrible. It, I think, I know this is a certain desire of families. Is this a family? Is this something that a certain family wanted to have? Anyway, thank you.
At the time, um, we don't have these sold to anyone, but we have several dozen families that have expressed interest in this type of property.
Okay, next we have Lisa Warren.
Um, this is Peggy. Did you mean to?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Peggy, sorry. I clicked on the wrong one. Go ahead, Peggy.
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. Um, preserving the open space, natural-looking environment still applies. This is a disruption of the natural environment and changes the atmosphere of the existing burial grounds. Families chose the cemetery for specific reasons. I've gone in there just to contemplate. It's a very peaceful place. The thought of putting four concrete structures there just doesn't fit with, with the cemetery and its surrounding area. Also, I wanted to point out that the Hammond Snyder House is very close. It wasn't shown and measured the distance between it, um, and. Um, and the Hammond Snyder Loop Trail goes right by this area. So putting concrete in a natural area just doesn't fit. And it serves maybe four families? It just doesn't seem, it's going against the grain and it doesn't feel right. And the outreach, where were the notices posted? I didn't see anything visible from Rancho, from the entrance to Rancho San Antonio, and I hike there pretty frequently. Um, it wasn't visible from the entrance to the gates of heaven. So where were these signs posted? Thank you.
Hi Peggy, the, um, oh, sorry, these signs were posted at the gate, at the entry to both the hiking trail and our cemetery. They're about, I think, eight feet wide by six feet tall. And the images of those, I believe, are part of, um, Jiang's presentation, but I can also share if need be.
Okay, next we have, um, now we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, so I, I, I want to comment that I think Peggy had some good comments. Jennifer as well. I, I see that this is an organization, for lack of a better term, that's aware by the history of things, that they need permits to make changes. And this is a very significant change. Yet they chose to go ahead and do it without applying for the correct permits. That baffles me and bothers me. Also, I, I, I agree with a lot of Peggy's comments. I, I'm concerned about the families who are visiting family members, the friends of those people that are already there. And I, I think it speaks that the community that was sent notices, I'm downed likes, a few of them may have been, well, not there, but maybe somewhere else, but the rest were just not interested. And I think that needs to be paid attention to. And the fact, I, I'm not sure that if it, it wasn't my job to notify people, that I wouldn't have notified all the family, that the primary family member that was in contact for someone being laid to rest there, be told that this could be happening. Because as it was said, someone was visiting their family member and that's how this all came about. Or we would already have four perhaps there. I, you know, I, it, it's an odd subject for me to talk about, honestly. I just think they should have known better and that there's not a lot of support. And if I had to say yea or nay right now, I would say no, thank you. And so that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Um, next we have, uh, Patrick Quoc. Uh, welcome, former mayor Quoc. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, you need to unmute Patrick. Okay, there we go. Go ahead.
Cupertino residents for over 30 years. I live at 10222 Common Road Cupertino. I am opposing the application for the following reasons. Number one, expectations. My wife, who is now buried there, uh, and I purchased a plot, and like all other owners, uh, they have full expectation that this will be above ground, that there will not be any above ground burials at the entry of the plots. Uh, the current entry is open with serine. Uh, there's no upper, uh, above ground burial structures or any structures of any kind. Uh, we pay premium price for the seclusion and openness. We felt betrayed and deceived by the cemetery if above ground burials are permitted. Second, notification, I quite agree with the previous owners. Uh, none of the current owners of the plots, I think there are about at least 300 of those, uh, are notified, uh, of anything. Uh, they posted a board out in the entry, and only the labors that live within certain radius of the cemetery, but we are not notified of this. Uh, I am the only one that, uh, because I visit there every day, uh, saw the board. But the others, they are out of county, they don't visit them, they only visit them only on occasion like Christmas and Thanksgiving. Uh, thirdly, uh, appro- approval of the above ground burial will set a precedence and order the openness of the cemetery. Right now, there is no, not even one above ground burial, uh, at all in the entire cemetery, except about less than 1% uh, have upway, uh, uh, markers, which are that there for a long time. All are flat, uh, 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 markers. And approval of anything, uh, above ground burials will bring high visibility and order the open landscape of the entire cemetery. Finally, the cemetery claims that, uh, entitled for any ex, ex, ex amendment. However, owners of those plots, even more, uh, dead or alive, they are entitled to the serine and openness of the entry, which are the reasons for the purchase, because they pay premium, just because it is open, nothing obstructed at the entrance. And, uh, I noticed that there are, uh, eight, or eight, uh, comments, and in addition to the, tonight's three or four, uh, comments, all are opposing, uh, the above ground burials. And, uh, I just simply urge the com- uh, the, uh, commissioners, uh, to deny the applications because they tried to stick behind and bill it without a permit. When they are caught, they said, oh, forgive us, we're gonna put four more. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Patrick. Um, okay, we will bring it back to, there's no, let me say, check one more time. Now, there's no more attendees that wish to speak. We will bring it back to the planning commission. So, uh, I'll go first, um, as the chair. So I think first, you know, the outreach to the surrounding communities and housing developments is great, but it, it's really immaterial. The existing plots were sold with the understanding that there would be no crypts in the area. Many of the purchasers of those plots are already in the cemetery, unable to speak here tonight. I appreciate Patrick speaking. Um, I know he visits his wife every day in the cemetery. And, you know, personally, in my wife's family, not at this cemetery, but at another cemetery up, uh, near San Mateo, they chose the area of the cemetery that did not allow crypts and did not allow upright headstones. And if the cemetery ownership suddenly said, oh, you know, you know, we're sorry, but now we're gonna do that, that would really be unacceptable. And I visited the cemetery today and I saw the illegally placed crypt. It, it looks very out of place in that cemetery, and I would like it removed as soon as possible. And I don't know, um, since it was a violation of the city code, if anything can be done in terms of fines being assessed against, uh, the owners of the cemetery. But, um, in my opinion, you know, I would like to see that, and that's all I have to say about it. And I will move on to the next, uh, panelist. Welcome, Ray.
I, I just want to clear up something and, and, and maybe it wasn't, was, uh, mentioned. Um, there are no bodies in the existing spec crypts, right? I just want to verify that.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, that was the first thing we asked.
Yeah, I know. I just don't want to, I don't want to desecrate anybody who's already.
We made that clear. We made that clear, please. Tell me there's nothing in there.
Okay, cool. So make sure that, that's okay. All right. And, and that, that's the most important question here. Uh, the second piece is, I have visited out there, uh, just to get a feel for what was going on and, uh, just to get a, get an understanding of, of, of what the concern was. Um, and, and the question really more is to the applicant is, is really, uh, what, what is the demand for the spec crypts as opposed to burial underground? Have you been receiving a lot of increase for it? And is there a different pricing for those?
Um, there is, it's similar in line with the pricing for the section right next to it, which to my knowledge was the only place other than the one I had showed you, um, that allowed upright memorialization. But we do have several dozen families that have come to us to request this type of burial. Um, we do have, we are, um, probably going to apply for a permit for a regular mausoleum, though I've found the permitting to, in this city to be very difficult to get through. So I'm not, if I can't get through with, you know, this tiny crypt, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to get through with the mausoleum. But it is a very high demand, um, in the area because of the lack of environmental fact, it's not green per se to be buried underground with California law. It's more green to be buried above ground because it requires less materials. So we have been getting a lot of, um, requests for this type of burial. There are different cultures that we are catering to more often that don't want to be underground. Um, so we've, we've seen a, a huge, we've seen a huge backlog of requests for it. Yes, it doesn't cost more, but it is different than something that we have currently on offer.
No, no problem. I understand. Crypts are very popular in Tibet and New Orleans, uh, for, for obvious reasons in New Orleans and, and is, uh, depending on the cultural, uh, implications. So, um, I, I just want to be clear too with the staff as well. Um, these spec crypts were put up without a permit. Is that correct? Just want to make sure that's true.
That's correct. Yeah, there's no modi- yes.
Okay, so it needs a modification. And then to the applicant Heather, I think if you followed the process for mausoleum and gone through that process, I, I don't think it's as hard as it may imagine. I think this is a city that does value a process. So I'll leave it at that. So thank you, Chair. Back to you.
Okay, very good. Uh, next, um, Commissioner Madapatla.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Yeah, so since it said, you know, gates of heaven, I wanted to go there, so I went there. About a week ago, right? So I really liked what I saw in general, right? You know, um, usually know the cemeteries, you know, you can find from distance, you know, you can tell, you know, it's a cemetery with, you know, all the tombstones and all that. This one is very nice, right? It almost looked like, you know, flat ground with, you know, all the stones laid out, you know, a flat. And, and there's one section where, you know, there are vertical stones, but, uh, those are like, you know, up against, you know, um, brush, right? So on a slope. So, so it's not visible either, right? So it looks pretty neat. And this one stood out for me, and I was trying to understand, you know, what the issue is. So it looks like, you know, this is built, you know, without permit, now asking for, you know, exceptions. So I'm not a big fan of, you know, um, uh, you know, make a mistake and ask for forgiveness. We don't do that, you know, for residents. If a resident, you know, does something like, you know, they build out, you know, more than what we approve, what we expect them, you know, we ask them to, you know, correct it, right? So, so the rules are rules and, you know, rules need to be followed. So that's kind of, you know, where my head is. I just wanted to, um, and I think, you know, uh, Commissioner Ray asked, you know, if these are built, you know, without permits and, you know, illegally, and the answer is yes, you know, so I'm not in fear of it.
Hey, let's see. Does any other, um, commissioner wish to speak on this? I don't see any other raised hands. Oh, there goes Vikram. Go ahead.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, uh, through the chair. Um, yeah, I just want to put on the record, there's only one crypt that's been placed.
Correct, yes. One crypt has been placed.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Commissioner Saxina. Go ahead. You need to unmute. You're muted.
Yeah, I'd just like to add one thing that, uh, the current cemetery blends in with the area very well. Uh, we have looked at buying a home there and, uh, a, a long time ago. And, uh, I think anything which changes the whole look and feel of the area needs to have a really high bar of, uh, reason why we should do it. Um, as Ex-Mayor Quoc mentioned, that, uh, to some, it almost looks like a breach of faith in terms of what they were doing. And, uh, and of course, the, you know, following due process is important. So I also feel that, uh, regardless of, um, you know, the newer preferences which some people might have, it's also important to preserve the agreement and the aspects which people who and whose loved ones are interned there, and also for the people living by. Uh, so I will also echo my fellow commissioners' view about not approving this.
Okay, um, does anyone else wish to speak? I don't see any other hands raised. You know, um, Attorney Wu, I do see now there's two more attendees that wish to speak. Um, they may not have been familiar with the procedures. Is it okay if I allow them to speak at this time?
It's within your discretion, Chair.
Okay, all right. So, um, I will reopen the, uh, public and, let's see, Albert, would you like to speak for three minutes? Albert Manalo, go ahead. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Okay, well, instead we'll go to Cece. Welcome, Cece. Cece, are you there? Uh, ma- maybe they just had their hands raised.
Hello, can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, sorry, um, this is Alexis, um, not Cece. Uh, I just kind of want to, I think there's a bit of confusion, um, about maybe some of the terms. So currently at Gate of Heaven, there are already, um, above ground burials. Uh, we have thousands of burials in our mausoleums that are there, um, that are above ground and out i- i- in the open for people to see. So I kind of think maybe there's a little bit of confusion about the expectation there. Um, there are these huge buildings that have, uh, people above the ground that are, that are placed inside there. And also, um, I do understand not wanting to disrupt the landscape. Um, but if you, you know, look, if you're looking straight at that section, there's also this huge, I believe, cement factory. I'm, I'm not too sure what it is in that, that, that area. That's there too. And, um, I, I think, you know, by saying that, you know, be these concrete buildings that were placed, are, placing are gonna be an eyesore. It, it's a little misleading because they're not concrete, they're beautiful granite, um, polished, absolutely gorgeous materials that, that are being used to, uh, commemorate these families. And, um, it, it's not a new desire. These types of buildings, um, have been around for hundreds of years, excuse me, for hundreds of years. Um, and yeah, I think we would be doing a, a great injustice to, uh, the community of people that, that are interested in this and in wanting to, uh, memorialize their family. So, thank you.
Okay, um, Albert, are you here?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, Planners, be here. Uh, my name's Albert Manalo and I'm the Family Service Advisor at Gate of Heaven. And I want to express the first word of our title is family and because we put families first. I approve this above ground crypt so we can better serve our families by providing another option to lay their loved ones to rest. Some may raise, ma- some may raise issues about these crypts, like it being a nuisance or a eyesore. But I would like to assert that the crypts will only be four feet tall. This will not be a, an issue because we have niche banks or, uh, column bariums where we place family urns that are six feet tall in a couple of our sections in our, in our cemetery. So to conclude, we are about like a thousand feet away from any neighboring, uh, neighborhood. So that's not an issue. Okay, and, um, another issue that's arising is safety. These crypts are tucked away in our back of our cemetery. It will not obstruct, uh, any traffic or obstruct any, uh, pathway to get to the All Souls section. Any reasonable person will, will not walk or climb around these crypts because they're, they're built structures. Thus, there's no, no safety issues. People say we're gonna disrupt the environment. It will not because you can see the Kaiser Concrete Querries right behind us and you can see it from the 280 freeway. Our park-like location is still inviting to our family visitors that come and visit, also our neighbors that, that hike from Rancho San Antonio and our, our daily walkers from, from the Forum. We have a diverse culture from our area, from all walks of life. And we would like to offer these crypts to these families that require one due to their family's traditions and wants. So thinking over again, because we're here for our families, and we're not just putting these up just because we want to, because it was, is needed. Like there's a cemetery mission, Santa Clara's been around since 1800. They have crypts like this too. Like, like, uh, Mr. Ray Wong's, Wang said, there's crypts in, in Colma. We're just doing what the families want. So please don't punish us, just trying to do our best to help our families. Okay? Thank you.
Go ahead, Myra.
Hi, my name is Myra, and, um, I'd like to first off, um, acknowledge the, um, the, uh, the problem, problem in, of any aesthetics that the, the problem, problem in, of any aesthetics that could arise in above-ground crips. Uh, like Alexis said, we do have mausoleums, we do have um columbariums, uh, we do have above-ground, above-ground uh interments. Um, so I want, you know, it's, it's good to clear that up, but it's also um almost impossible to think that a cemetery that's been here for decades um won't expand and won't expand what their families are, are asking for. Um, the uh, the cemetery is very visible. Otherwise, we provide families uh funerals, we, and services on a daily basis uh year-round. There's, you know, uh pipe, Scottish pipers, there's funeral uh coaches. Um, there's funeral equipment when we have to um unearth a committal space. And so it's, it's not that it's a quiet park. This is a, an actual operative cemetery. And I would think that, you know, people would already acknowledge that. Um, it's still going to be very nice to ride horses around. Um, I think that, you know, the, the existing above-gar- uh above-ground vault um is there, but it hasn't been, you know, given a chance to uh be, been given some, some uh hedges and that type of thing. I think it, you know, it looks pretty raw right now, but um given uh some, some more greenery that it will mix in and it will probably not look as bad as everybody thinks it will be. So, thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. We'll go back to the planning commission. Yeah, sorry, Patrick, you already have spoken. So if there's any more discussion or if somebody would like to, um.
I have a quick question and I think it really was, um, so it sounds like the process was not followed. Um, have we followed the process to ask for an exception at this moment? Or is it the fact that we don't have a process in place and not an exception is being asked for something after the fact? So I just wanted to get clarification from staff.
Sure, uh, thank you for the question, the clarification, uh, Commissioner Wong. Um, yes, I mean, the, the process for any type of change to um the cemetery operations where, you know, because it was very explicit when the cemetery was first the use permit was given from the county that, you know, these, a certain type of um markers should be placed. And so over time, anytime there was a drastic change of that, you know, a mausoleum or in addition to the existing mausoleum, the crematoria, the Veterans Memorial, statuary, anything like that, the terracing uh for the above-ground markers, you know, those always came through some type of, either a new use permit or a modification to a use permit. Or even some type of director's minor modification with, it didn't change uh the prior approval substantially, but was a, you know, a reallocation of um of, of a number of uh, of, of burials to another portion of a, of a, of, of, of a section of the cemetery. So this, this is, it, I wouldn't consider it an exception rather than that. This is a modification to uh accept the process. That wasn't followed.
I just like to add, it was my opinion that this section allowed upright markers and so that is um sort of how this happened. Um, and so that was my mistake and that's why I had uh one of them placed and then, you know, we stopped the process and followed um your process. I do want to clarify that this cemetery was never a flush marker cemetery. We, in nineteen seventy-one, we had.
Okay, um, you know, I think you've already spoken several times, so um.
Oh, I thought I got your respondent applicant.
No, you're done. Okay. Um, would anyone like to make a motion on, on this? For the resolution six-six-two-two?
So Chair Shaw, you also suggested some changes, right? So.
No, I didn't suggest, oh.
Like the, you know, uh, removal of that, the, the already made structure and, you know, and potentially.
No, no, I think, you know, they'll have to remove it if we don't approve this. Okay, would anyone like to um make a motion for resolution six-six-two-two?
Okay, I just want to ask one quick question before we do that. This is governed by the Diocese of San Jose, is that correct? Just making sure.
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure. That's the app, the applicant side. Okay, thank you. I, I mean, to move the process forward, I'm happy to make a motion, so to.
No, I'm just wondering, um, Mr., you know, City Attorney Wu, what happens if nobody makes a motion or if they do and it's not seconded?
Um, then there's, then there's no, no motion. Then it'll fail. But uh I just wanted to, 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 to say, or maybe it's continued, but I want to say that um, you know, whatever motion you guys uh engage in, that it's, I would suggest that you re-summarize the, the findings that you might have had uh in supporting a motion.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Wong.
I have a comment. Uh, um, I think the most of the concerns are related to the uh agreement made uh with the previous uh, uh people. And uh second is the certainty of the surroundings obstructed by the uh the, and the new crypts which have been proposed. Uh, I, I have a solution. Uh, probably somebody said it, uh, I think some caller said it. Uh, it would have been nice if you, if you ha- intend to put any bushes or greenery around those cliffs. And uh that rendered in picture would have made a difference uh if presented to the uh, to the audience. Uh, right now it is standing out and it is a, uh, it is a a piece in, by itself and doesn't, doesn't really uh, uh, uh uh merge with the surroundings. And that, that definitely looks a little odd, but if you plan to have uh some kind of a hedges or some kind of a greenery around it and then you present the same picture, it will look very different. So just, just a suggestion on that. That's that.
Okay, back to Commissioner Wong. Are you um making a motion or are you not?
I am debating all the options here. We cannot make a motion. We can make a motion to go forward. I don't know if there's any other debate. I was trying to listen to the city attorney's um push, but I, I guess we'll move the process forward. Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to um find that the proceedings exempt from SEQA and approve the use permit amendment M dash two zero two-two dash oh oh two.
Uh, is there a second? Okay, seeing no second, um uh, City Attorney Wu, I guess that means the, the motion fails. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, okay, so we are done with um that. Uh, let me go back to the agenda here. Okay. Um, so do we, we're on to any old business or new business? Nothing. And now we're on to staff and commission reports. So uh, does anyone have a, any report on any meetings they've attended or wish to speak on anything? This is your time. Raise your hand. Go ahead, Ray.
I, I've been, I've been, as you have as well, attending the Cali meetings and extremely concerned uh the uh types of legislation that have been being passed uh by our state leaders. Uh, we have a commitment to improve affordability here in Cupertino. And I think those meas- measures are actually working against us. And uh I'm hoping that our legislators, uh, assembly people and uh state senators are paying attention uh to the fact that they are not reflecting the residents' wishes and not addressing affordable housing and siding with developers. And I think that is a dangerous piece, dangerous situation where the will of the residents are not being considered. And so I, I think that's something that we probably should find a way to express, hopefully through city council or even through a com- you know, a motion passed by this planning commission. Uh, so that's about it. I think it's very important for everyone to pay attention to the state bills that are being passed uh and, and being considered. Uh, we have a state government that is intent on inflicting as much damage on local government uh without understanding the local government needs and addressing true market affordability.
Okay, thank you. Next, uh, Mooney.
So I, I just want to um get some clarification on, you know, whose turn for the mayor's meetings uh like, you know, for the remainder of the year. Because I think I already attended, you know, maybe two or three for the year. I got a request, you know, last week and I saw the email much later asking if I'm available for a mayor's meeting. And I thought, no, it was, my turn was done for the year.
Okay, who, Siara, are you the one that keeps track of that? Or I'm not sure?
I think we, we have two meetings a year, I believe, uh, Mooney, so. Two and a half, depending on what happens on your turn.
Thank you for posing the question, Commission. I do have the um final version of the committee assignments that was adopted back in February, I'm sorry, um, January. So it looks like for the September meeting, um Commissioner Saxena is set to attend as the representative for the planning commission. Um, I do not coordinate these meetings. That would be with the executive assistant to city council um, and to the city manager, but I can definitely reach out to them.
Okay, yeah.
Um, and provide clarification.
Because I'm always confused about that too. Yeah, just having, having him or her send us the schedule for the rest of the year would be great.
Yeah. Would you like me to resend this um list to the commission?
Yeah, that is safe because I, I penciled in the dates based on what we agreed in February, so I kind of put it on my calendar. And then I know there was some shuffling and I adjusted my calendar accordingly. And then I saw an email from s- some other clerk asking, you know, if I'm available for the meeting. I'm like, you know, it's not my turn. Why are you asking me?
Okay, um, anyone else? Uh, well, I will go now. So last week I attended the League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach. Uh, I think the most interesting session I attended was the session on impact fees. And we were strongly, well, all the cities in attendance were strongly advised to look at their impact fees at least every two years and especially now um because of the inflation that has occurred and ensure that they're set to what the Nexus study shows is necessary. And it was pointed out that if you don't do that, you can't retroactively collect those fees. There, it's money that the city is just, they just lose. So I would hope that uh impact fees are looked at and updated regularly and set to what the Nexus study shows. Um, and there were a lot of examples pointed out of cities that have lost significant amounts of money because their impact fee structure had not been updated. So I, I'm hopefully is that the planning department that looks at that, Pew? Or is that um finance? Or who looks at those?
Uh, with regard to impact fees, um, you know, tho- those are um it, it depends on the kind of impact fee that is being imposed. So. Sorry, sir, you were saying?
No, no, okay, yeah, I didn't realize that we're different, um.
Right, so, so for, for example, BMR impact fee would come through the planning department, but then there, there are other kinds of impact fees um that could.
Like parks and streets.
Parks, like there might be utility impact fee. Some cities have a general impact fee that they kind of club everything under. They have one impact fee that applies to everything. Um, but uh, so, so it depends on how it's structured.
Okay, thank you. And it was also pointed out that even if you set the impact fees to what your Nexus study shows is necessary, there can be appeals that from a developer that says, hey, your impact fees, even though they're at what the Nexus study says is necessary, they make it impossible for us to uh make a develop, uh, do a project that pencils out. Um, so we have to be a little bit careful there as well. And uh, yeah, that, that was the main session that I went to that uh was of interest to planning commission. And let's see, go back to the agenda. Okay, future agenda setting, does anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I just have a, a short report. Um, I want to make an announcement. There is um planning commissioner training that is being offered by the Institute of Local Governments. Um, it, Institute for Local Government. Uh, it is actually being held very conveniently in Cupertino at the Cupertino Community Hall. Um, I am happy to send the um information along. It is on October seventh, I believe. It runs from nine AM to four PM. So I, I will um send an email about that, but um before I do, maybe I can just share my screen really quickly. So um you can get a sense of what the website looks like. It is uh ca-ilg.org. And I just uh Googled planning commissioner training ILG and this webpage came up. Um, there is an email and there's a, a, a form that you need to fill out on the, on the website. It is free for planning commissioners, is my understanding.
Okay, and how does this differ from the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy?
Um, uh, there might be some overlap. I just, I don't, I don't know if it is much different from that. But they do talk about the roles of planning commission, um, just basically and the, the structure surrounding planning commission as well. So if anybody finds it interesting and of interest, um, I will send this information along.
Okay, very good. Um, okay, for future agenda setting, does anyone have something they would like to see on a future agenda?
ADO.
ADO what?
I do act.
I'm sorry, let Sanji finish.
Uh, basically, uh, uh, I read through the Palo Alto and the state uh, back and forth discussions uh related to ADO. Uh, I can share it. I don't know. You can send it to the pew and she can probably uh send those links to all of you. Uh, and uh, there are, there are a lot of discussion about the Palo Alto City con- uh and uh state about the height of the ADO setback of four feet and lot of contention between the two and the arguments put back and forth. So I think it might be a good idea to at least uh, yeah, just uh knowing them and uh keeping that uh, that these are the possibilities. Uh, uh, at least without just letting what the state is doing and let them do that. Uh, so uh, I would think that there have been so much discussion related to ADO that it justifies a discussion or at least there's some kind of a study uh related to it. That's all.
Okay, is, yeah, and I would like, I think I would like to see that too. And go ahead, uh, Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Wong.
And uh, um, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I would second that as well to make sure that it's uh an item that's for the future. Uh, I would like to add the thirty-second, the thirty-day uh notice. Maybe we can actually discuss how a thirty-day notice is actually notified to the project in minutes or three minutes or certain.
Yeah, that's a good idea. If there's a, can do an email list or something like that. Um, okay, yeah, I, I will.
To actually enact that.
Right. Okay, and Commissioner Saxina? You're muted.
I want to revisit uh one of those things about the school generation ratios across apartments and homes and so on. And we've been bringing up that topic very often and we follow voted as a top priority in the work program. I wanted to get an update from the city about whether any progress has been made on that.
Okay, I mean, I would like that too. I don't, I think the issue is that they're, they just don't have the data on that.
Yeah, at least I, I feel it'd be great for the city to at least create a report of what they have tried uh, uh, which are the different agencies they've tried to get the data from. Uh, and just a general state of affairs kind of a thing on that.
Okay, Pew, you have your hand raised?
Uh, no, sir. Um, that was from before.
Oh, okay. Oh, so one other thing, um, I had been asked several times about our Cupertino's jobs-housing ratio and I finally, I did get an answer from the city as to what our actual jobs number is because I looked at the A-BAG report and it was way low. And I looked at still uh SV at home and it was way high. But I did eventually get an accurate number of the actual jobs in Cupertino. It was forty-two thousand something. I don't have the exact um number. And of the number of housing units. So actually our jobs-to-housing ratio actually improved a little bit from the last uh time it was calculated. I think we are now at it was just uh a fraction improvement, but we are. uh it was just uh a fraction improvement, but we are going in the right direction um in that regard. Uh, you know, Valco will neg- will affect that a lot because it has so mu- will generate so many jobs with so few housing units, but even that would only worsen it by uh maybe a couple of percentage points.
So what's the number?
Um, if you uh, let's see.
I think the question is, do we gain jobs or lose housing? Or lose housing, gain jobs?
No, I mean, you know, obviously, the S B thirty-five project is going to generate a lot more um, jobs than housing. Um, let me see if I can find uh jobs-to-housing ratio Cupertino. I did a spreadsheet because um, so we are at one, we're at one point nine seven right now. We have forty-two thousand two hundred sixty-one jobs. That's the twenty-twenty-two estimate and for housing units, twenty-one thousand four hundred sixty, which is the twenty-twenty estimate. So we're actually probably a little better because there've been, you know, some housing that was finished in the past two years. So that works out to one point nine seven uh without Valco. With, you know, with Valco, I think it goes a little bit over two.
I always found that number to be bizarre because you could have houses that could house ten people versus houses that house two, but anyways.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the state uses an average of one point five. Um, their goal is one point five jobs per housing unit and um, so I guess they're figuring one point five people plus, I mean, plus plus children, right? So, yeah. Yeah, the number is a little bizarre, but it does um have some validity. And Vikram, is your hand still up or we, did you wanna? You're muted again. We can't hear you, Vikram. Okay, I'll lower your hand. Okay, Ray, are you done or do you have more?
I'm not. I, there's another issue I've been uh asking for status on, which is really the five G towers. This was still a hot issue for many residents. I keep being asked about what the status is. I keep being told that this is not a planning issue. It's a public works issue. Uh, we have a runaround. I I I wanna bring this issue back up to the table and onto the agenda. Um, and and I wanna know what the status is and why we continue to get a runaround for an issue that could have easily been resolved given the expertise of our city attorney, given the expertise of what other cities have done to put uh architectural restrictions on towers. Uh, and that should be a purview of the Planning Commission and I would love to see that back on the agenda. I cannot believe we have punted on this issue twelve months later.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else interested in putting that on the agenda? Mooney, Vikram?
Definitely, um, I'd like to know more about it. And uh get of, like, we need to get a logical conclusion to on the thing. I think right now we just have too many loose ends on that.
Right. I mean, I would point out that years ago, we did put in architectural standards for the small cells, not particularly specifically five G. Otherwise, there'd be these square boxes attached to telephone and electric poles um, instead of what we have now, the streetlight pole, um, five G cells. Okay, um, so we do have that list now. So is there anything else before we adjourn?
Uh, just a quick question. When will we be required to be back in city? Uh, back into the chambers or is that continued to be postponed? And just know if there's a date in general.
Yeah, um, City Attorney Wu, do you, I don't think we have a date yet. The state keeps extending it. The uh
Yeah, that's that's accurate.
Okay, cool.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. And uh so we'll adjourn the meeting.